All right, it's six o'clock. We're going to commence the zoning board of appeals for January the fourth, twenty twenty four. Call the order, roll call. We do have a quorum. We're missing two members. Other than that, we're ready to go. First item of business is minutes from the December seventh meeting. Board, any comments, edits, motions?
I move to approve the minutes from the December seventh meeting.
Person a second, all those in favor? Minutes from December approved. Organizational and procedural items, we get this fun time of year when we get to revote and nominate for positions on the board. So do we have any nominations, thoughts? Comments? Nominate people who aren't here. Anything like that.
The chair, chair wants to continue?
I agree. I second.
So make a motion.
So Marty, did you make a motion to keep it status quo?
Yeah, I moved, I moved to.
You got to clarify.
I moved to have the ZBA chair. And the vice chair to be the president members. Only make sure that.
For the record, we've only been together for ten years on this board.
Exactly, for the next ten years. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, so I moved that we have the present chair and the vice chair to continue for this year, for twenty twenty four.
Person a second to maintain the leadership of the board. All those in favor? All right, one more year around the sun, right? Yeah, well, we like, we like to do them manually, just in case, right? They don't necessarily term with, right, with our larger appointment. That's right. There is no unfinished business for staff, to my knowledge, no unfinished business. All right, and that will proceed to new business, but before that, I will. Issue the zoning board of appeals chairman's preamble, which states that the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days of the decision here this evening. And with that, we will proceed to first item of new business. We're not doing. First business, three and four? You can if you want. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to today's agenda to handle case ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one prior to case ZBA twenty-three dash twenty, assuming most people are here for the latter case, in case presumably the timing wise would probably go longer, so.
All right, I have a motion to switch the, the two items of business for this evening. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'm fine with that. All right, we'll proceed then with ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one. Robert Donner on behalf of the homeowners at fourteen sixty-three Kingsdown Circle requests two variances from chapter twenty-seven, section two-six-nine to allow retaining walls to encroach into the front and rear setbacks and to allow retaining wall heights of seven feet.
Thank you. Thank you. So the subject law is at the corner of Kingsdown Circle and North Springs Drive. Since it's a corner lot, it has two street setbacks. So the thirty-five foot street setbacks are applied to both the west and south property lines, the forty-foot rear setback to the north property line, and the ten-foot interior side setback to the east property line. In twenty twenty-one, a permit to demolish the previous house and construct a new house was issued to the property. In February twenty twenty-three, the city engineer went out to the site for an inspection on the new house and noticed three unpermitted retaining walls that had been constructed. The retaining walls encroach a maximum of thirteen feet into the street setback facing Kingsdown Circle and a maximum of thirty-five feet into the rear setback. Additionally, two of the retaining walls exceed four feet in height. The maximum height of the walls is seven feet. The new construction therefore prompts two variance requests. One request to allow retaining walls to encroach into the street and rear setbacks and to allow retaining wall heat height of seven feet. As a quick note, the city of Dumity considers a tiered retaining wall system to be considered as one retaining wall for the purposes of measuring height. Therefore, two of the three retaining walls are considered as one retaining wall. That can be seen in the photo that's furthest to the left. The retaining walls can be seen in red on the survey to the right and in the pictures to the left. The encroachment of the retaining walls into the street and rear setbacks and their height would normally prompt a special administrative permit. However, they're going through the variance process because they did the work without a permit. So the subject property drops off approximately twelve feet from the southeast property line to the northwest property line, which creates a sloped backyard. Removal of the retaining walls would cause significant issues because the retaining walls were installed to level out the rear yard to accommodate a walkout basement in its current location and to stabilize the slope. Without accounting for the unique conditions of the site, the strict application of the setbacks could cause a practical difficulty since there may be structural issues associated with removing the retaining walls at this point. As a corner lot, the property has two street setbacks and a rear setback, which constrains the buildable area and limits the space for improvements to the rear yard. Overall, staff finds that the project would not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief, nor be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the condition that construction needs to be in compliance with the submitted site plan. Construction of the retaining walls is already complete, so this is just sort of doing due diligence on it, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any initial questions for staff? Is Robert Donner or another representative here to speak? Thank you. Please approach the. Podium and state your name and address, please.
Robert Donner.
That's, that's good. Address, please.
The address?
Yeah.
Fourteen sixty-three Kingsdown Circle.
Thank, thank you. And just briefly address the board on your application and why you're requesting this and, and sending what hardships you incur if we do not grant it.
Yes, sir. During the course of construction, we were receiving flooding in the basement. We, we built the elevations to the plan. We relied upon the GIS topo, which is slightly off. And the property is, is a corner lot. The property on the east is at a higher elevation. The property to our north is at a lower elevation. So the water was continuously shedding onto our property. And if we didn't, and then we put a drainage system in for our permit. If we didn't contain it and slow it down, it would just continue to flow right down the neighbor spot. So in order to fix all the problems, we put an engineer retaining wall in there. We had no choice to put it outside of a setback because the entire yard is a setback because it's a corner lot. So it was a very practical need that we had to meet to prevent flooding.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Anyone here else wants to speak in favor of the application? We do have one. Thank you. So Bob is the person standing, would you please address the podium and your name and address, please?
Sure. Yeah, my name is Bob Bama. My address is one four seven nine North Springs Drive. Okay, sir. So I've been neighbors of Bill and Kelly since I moved here in two thousand and three, moved here in two thousand and five. And they've been wonderful neighbors, and I saw the construction go up and thought it looked perfect to me. And then I noticed the variance, you know, request came through. And I just want to say it looks fine. I don't think there's any structural issues with it. I don't think any neighbors would have any concerns with it visually or mechanically, structurally. I'll just also mention I'm a Iraq War combat veteran and I continue to serve in the Army Reserve, so I believe in rules and regulations for sure. But in this case, there's a very strong case to have an exception for them. I can't think of a strong case against it. So I just want to speak in favor of my neighbors and the other neighbors, I believe, would support as well. Okay, subject to your questions.
Thank you for your, thank you for comments and for your service. Anyone else in favor? I don't think we have a card for anyone else. Anyone here in opposition? If not, we'll close for public comment and board.
Yeah, so is the, I think Robert Downer is this one that's well? Can, can you come back, please? So you mentioned something dumb that kind of passed, at least me, the GIS couple or something. What was that?
The GIS topo, so it was when we demoed the original house. We did not do a field run survey. We relied on the state satellite imagery basically to determine the elevations.
Okay.
And at the end, when we had the city come out, we actually did a field survey, and we validated that the actual field survey showed that the GIS was off by a foot plus in, in accuracy.
Okay.
So that, that explained why our engineers didn't catch that, some of that flow when we put the elevation where we did it.
Had they caught that, would a variance be necessary or not?
Had they caught that, when we submitted the application for building permit, they would have designed a retaining wall to go there.
Okay.
And then we would have had to have some type of administrative variance or discount of variance to get it approved before construction. It was basically not known that we would encounter that issue.
Yeah, and I know that you're here on behalf of the homeowners, right? But what role did you play? Oh, you're the builder. Okay. Yeah, a lot of these things, I mean, it's, it's good to get explanation. I just don't want to be the board of forgiveness because people sometimes they get the thing and they're like, eh, we'll build it and later on we'll, we'll come back. And that just, to me, I know other people, it just annoys me. So I'm just, I'm just saying. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, you wonder why it's not the original plan, but they can explain that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still wonder when the retaining walls, I mean, we, we clearly understand why they were needed, but I guess was there a, a thought that we ought to check to see if we need a special permit to build them? I mean, I, I'm just curious. Just because I probably would have saved time and money to have gotten it approved in up, upfront, rather than.
Oh, had we known upfront, absolutely, we would have done that. So we didn't know the problem until after the house was built. And we started receiving flooding in the basement.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand that. I'm sorry.
Prior to construction of the walls, you're saying?
Right, prior, not construction of the house, but prior to construction of the retaining walls.
Well, at that point, I mean, we're, we're, we're addressing.
I, I guess you, you wanted to stop the problem immediately and.
Yeah, I mean, it was a clear and present issue that we were getting water in the house and we were restricted on how we could grade the property and if we, if we graded it and sloped it away from us, it would have caused another problem by flooding the other neighbor. So it was the, it was the only, it was the only solution.
They just, they just didn't get the administrative permit ahead of time, which they should have. Right? Yeah. Yeah.
And had we known that it would be an issue, we certainly would have done it. I mean, it was a two-year process from getting the demo permit and the building permit. And we, the house had a different orientation. The original house still had a basement at the, at that same elevation, or so we thought, plus or minus a foot. So when we, we had a, I mean, we submitted multiple times and, and spent ample time doing it because we had to reorient the house because it's a corner lots and there are a lot of issues there. So it wasn't, it wasn't an issue of us trying to, you know, bypass the regulations. It was just an unforeseen issue that happened during construction.
I, I do actually have a question for staff. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just curious and maybe even to put in the record, what is the timeframe usually when someone submits a request for a special administrative permit? Between when it's, because clearly this was an issue. They did not want to extend any, you know, if it takes two months to get a special administrative permit, you know, there could be five floods between now and then.
Right, so it's a thirty-day turnaround typically between when we put out the sign and then when we can make the decision, the sign on the property needs to be up for thirty days. And typically, we try to turn those around fairly quickly. So, you know, sometimes people submit the paperwork and then if they pay right away, we can put out the sign within a matter of days.
And then thirty days after the sign is put out, you can?
Yeah, then we can issue our decision.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the request for two variances from chapter twenty-seven, section two-sixty-nine to allow retaining walls to encroach into the streets, street and rear setbacks and to allow retaining wall height of seven feet with the following condition. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by ACR Engineering Incorporated and dated nine seven twenty-three. See appendix A.
Second. First and a second for approval. All those in favor? Application's approved. Thank you. Seating out a ZBA twenty-three dash twenty, Michael Phelps, applicant for fifty-eight, fifty-three eighty-three Tilly Mill Road. Request a special exception from chapter twenty-seven, section one-four-three to allow relief from contextual lot characteristic standards. Let me preempt the staff a bit and discuss the fact that we are addressing that variance, which is the contextual characteristic standards. And that is what's before the board here this evening, but staff, please elaborate on exactly what's here before us and what we can discuss and what we can adjudicate and what we cannot.
Yeah, absolutely. So the case I'm presenting on this evening is ZBA twenty-three dash twenty for fifty-three eighty-three Tilly Mill Road. The applicant, Mr. Phelps, requests a special exception from chapter.
The applicant, Mr. Phelps, requests a special exception from chapters twenty-seven, section one forty-seven to allow relief from the contextual lot. Characteristic standards in order to allow a three lot subdivision. Um, the applicant had also initially requested a, a variance when they had a four lot subdivision proposed. But based on their conversations with the Renfor Lake, um, HOA, they amended their application to a three lot subdivision. And then that negated the need for a variance from chapter sixteen, section two forty-one. Which, um, essentially required there to be additional lot width on corner lots, but. It no longer applies again because it's a three lot subdivision and their corner lot was then wide enough. So. Uh, a little bit of background on the contextual lot characteristics requirements. I believe this may be the first request for relief from this. Specific standard that y'all are being asked to consider. I believe you've looked at contextual setbacks before. But not the contextual lot frontage sta- standards, which are the subject of this case. So overall, the purpose of the contextual lot characteristic standards is to ensure that new subdivisions. Are comparable in character and density to the surrounding neighborhood. The way that these regulations intend to accomplish that is by requiring that the average lot area. And lot frontage be comparable to surrounding properties. As it applies to fifty-three eighty-three Tilly Mill Road. The contextual lot characteristics apply to this proposal because the applicant intends to subdivide the property. The properties that are used to determine the average area and frontage are twenty seventy-seven Renfor Lake Drive. And fifty-one fifty Sheridan Lane. The lots across the street and around the corners cannot be used to determine the averages because they are on different block faces. The applicable block face is highlighted in red. This, uh, block face is applicable and we, you know, by code. Have to apply the contextual lot standards because there are more than two lots on this block. So based on these two properties, twenty seventy-seven and fifty-one fifty, the required area for any new lot on this block would be seventeen. Thousand three hundred and eighty square feet and the required frontage would be a hundred and fifty-one feet. The frontage is calculated as the average plus an additional fifteen feet. So that's how we get to the hundred and fifty-one feet. And that would actually be wider than either twenty seventy-seven or fifty-one fifty. Um, it might be a little bit small in the text, but I do have the, the frontage and the lot area for all of those lots. If you want to take a look at that. So the existing property fifty-three eighty-three Tilly Mill Road is a two point three eight acre property with one single family home constructed in nineteen hundred. This property was not included in the original Renfor Lake subdivision development, which was done back in the nineteen nineties. It was maintained, um, as the original family that owned most of this property. It was, uh, maintained as part of their homestead. Um, and so one of the owners still owns another portion of the original property across the street as well. But this one went up for sale recently. There are very few two point three acre lots left in Dunwoody. Um, they're kind of rare to come by and so anytime one of these does come on the market. It's very typical for people to want to subdivide them. So that's the reason why we're here this evening. So the proposed project is a three lot subdivision. Um, and. Excuse me, um, the proposal meets the standards for the R dash one hundred zoning district. That just stipulates that every lot needs to be fifteen thousand. Square feet and a hundred feet wide. Um, this lot surpass, surpasses each of those easily. Um, and then the contextual lot characteristics are on top of that and in, in addition to the zoning. And while you can't get really a variance from those base zoning regulations, you can get a variance from the contextual lot. Characteristics. Um, so they are deficient in lot frontage. Um, for the contextual lot standards, um, but they're definitely sufficient in terms of the lot area. Um, they're. Almost twice the size is what is required, um, by those characteristics. Um, so the subject here is just for the lot frontage. As far as the review and approval criteria, the contextual lot regulations are a challenge to apply for this property. As I showed you on the previous slide, this block face only has three properties on it. Um, and only two applicable properties that can be used to determine the average frontage. Um, the code itself recommends, however, that four lots be used in calculating the average. Uh, but again, there's no other applicable properties, um, to include in this. The regulations just aren't written to consider every specific situation. This is a pretty unique situation here. Um, so in this case, staff finds that a little discretion is necessary. So when we were reviewing the criteria, we took a look at the broader context of the neighborhood. So a large proportion of the lots within the Renfor Lake neighborhood have one hundred feet or less of street frontage. Um, the two adjacent properties, twenty seventy-seven and fifty-one fifty, um, are much wider and much more shallow. Um, the extra width is needed for those lots to meet the minimum fifteen thousand square feet requirements. Um, and so that's why those lots specifically are wider. But there's also lots of one hundred foot wide lots in this neighborhood. Um, and that's because they are able to be deeper so that they can meet those minimum lot standards. So there is a mix. Um, so. The resulting subdivision from what the applicant is proposing, um, would be comparable to other homes in this neighborhood. It would not be any denser than what's there right now. Um, technically, it's actually less dense than the Renfor Lake neighborhood by a little bit. Um, so in terms of lot width, or excuse me, lot frontage and lot density. Um, these, this new subdivision, you know, would fit within the character of the neighborhood. Um, the strict application of the contextual lot characteristics would create a practical difficulty for the property owner. By limiting the development potential. Um, you know, essentially if they were to have to follow the rules, they would only be able to subdivide into two properties. Allowing relief allows a three lot subdivision. So we received two public comments, uh, received in support for the subdivision and one of those is a letter from the Renfor Lake HOA. Um, and those were included in the package. We also did receive sixteen comments in opposition to the path on the Tilly Mill frontage specifically. Um, and I did just want to quickly, um, address that, um, just because. I know that the Tilly Mill path is a controversial subject. Um, right now, um, and something that's very important to a lot of people. Um, but I say the following out of respect for you all, the zoning board of appeals. Um, the applicant, Mr. Phelps, who's been working on this for several months now and everyone's time here this evening. So the zoning board of appeals, um, in this case, does not have authority over the design of the Tilly Mill path. The side of the road the path is on or the finances related to the construction of the path. Um, tonight, the focus of this case really is to determine if the applicant is allowed to subdivide their property into three lots. So as part of any new single family home subdivision in Dunwoody, the developers asked to develop, uh, to dedicate right of way. Uh, right of way is the public space that is reserved for roads, sidewalks and utilities. The developer is being asked to dedicate the amount of right of way that is consistent with the right of way that their neighbors to the north and south. Um, have dedicated. So you can see the orange line is the neighbors' property lines, um, based on the survey. And then the pink line is their existing property line. And then the green line would be the proposed property line along the Tilly Mill frontage so that you, you can see it sort of matches up with, with. What's already there on Tilly Mill. Um, we ask that special exception and variance applicants. To sort of always show the right of way dedication if it's going to be needed for something like a subdivision or a massive redevelopment. Um, we always ask that they show that on their plans in order to help us determine if any additional variances are needed. Um, during the subdivision and permitting phase, which would occur after this. Um, many new dev- uh, developments and subdivisions are required to dedicate the right of way. So for example, the new Publix and Perimeter Center or the new subdivision on Roberts Drive across from the old school. Both of those developments dedicated right of way. And then they also subsequently built out the streetscape improvements for those developments. Um, and that is a sort of piecemeal approach where as new developments come online. They're asked to put in the required infrastructure for that project. Um, and then, um, you know, in the city, in the future, as they make the complete improvement, they fill in the gaps. Um, and this is really common. Like I said, you know, in the perimeter center, the new Publix built out the Ashford Dunwoody Trail. Um, then the Lazy Dog built out a piece of their trail. The Buffalo Wild Wings built out a piece of their trail. And then the Roberts Drive subdivision built out their portion of the sidewalk. Um, so. It's a pretty, pretty common thing that we do here and it ultimately saves taxpayer money in the long, uh, in the long run. Um, so there are certain cases where they do not build the streetscape, but instead of. Building the streetscape themselves, they provide a fee in lieu of doing the work. So those are the two options for developers. And like I said, typically it's going to be the latter. So currently there are concept plans for the Tilly Mill path, but there are no final design documents as with any other case. Um, staff communicated with the applicant regarding the right of way dedication and the streetscape improvements and we cited the most recent concept plans. That were provided by the Public Works Department. Uh, based on the status of the design process at the time of permitting, city staff and the developer will work to determine. Whether the developer installs the streetscape, whatever that may look like, based on the design, it is subject to change. Or they would provide the fee in lieu. Um, so again, tonight, what's under consideration are not the streetscape standards. Um, and again, I say all of this because the applicant has worked very hard with both, you know, city staff. Um, and the Renfor Lake neighborhood to propose a project that has both parties' recommendation of approval. Um, for the subdivision, I don't want us to lose sight of that, um, for the subject of this case tonight. So lastly, I'll just go over the staff recommendation. Um, we've recommended that, uh, you all approve the variance based on two conditions. The first condition is that. You know, that they will subdivide the property, um, based on what they've shown here, um, on their submitted plans. And the second one is not related to the dimensions of any sidewalk or side path. It's not related to a street buffer. It really only intends to state that. If the applicant were to install the streetscape, um, on this portion, uh, of their property along Tilly Mill Road. That they will preserve the forty-four inch oak tree that's in the right of way. Um, and I've included exhibits, um, in the package that show the tree, but I've also got a picture here just highlighting the tree that we're talking about. It is a very large, um, tree that does provide a lot of shade. So we just want to ensure that if the developer does install streetscape improvements. That they take care to preserve that tree. So overall, um, that is the case for this evening and I am available if you all have any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Excellent. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have one question. Just to make sure I understand, so the builder and the city. Will come to the decision. Those, those two together about whether. The developer will pay, give the funds to the city or build.
Correct.
That will not, has nothing to do with the ZBA. So we have no say so in any of that. That is just. The, that's, that's going to be between the city and the developer.
Yeah, the subject of the case really is the subdivision. The streetscape standards aren't a part of the request. So that's something that we handle. At the permitting phase.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other initial questions for staff? Good. The applicant care to, uh, address the board and, and, uh. State your name and address, obviously, and, uh.
Hello, I'm Julia Maxwell. Um, address is fifteen fifty North Ground Road, uh, Lawrenceville. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant to. Request approval for our special exception from chapter twenty-seven, section, uh, one forty-seven subsection three. Um, just to reiter- reiterate what Madeline said, um. The. Exception is really just, I mean, it's the minimum requirement needed to make us meet the requirements of the ordinance, um. Oh.
Can you speak louder?
Is this better?
Yes, a little bit.
Okay, okay, it's alright. I'll try not to yell, but, um. So the, um, it would allow relief from the contextual lot characteristic standards, um. It would allow for the proposed three homes to be built, um. It wouldn't be out of character with the surrounding homes, um, along that road and around this, in surrounding areas. Um, so we would respectfully request approval and additionally regarding the, um, second condition. We just would request that it not include a condition that a twelve foot path has to be included in there. Thank you. Do you have questions?
Thank you. Um, not right now, but we'll, we may have some further questions. Anyone else here want to speak in favor of the application? Uh, none in favor? Uh, but we do have a. You have one more?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My name is Robin Hine. I'm the president of Renfor Lake, uh, Homeowners Association, twenty-one fifty-one Bogans Lake Path. So I'm here to answer that question. I think that we favor this variance. As a homeowner and a subdivision, uh, a group of homeowners of forty of us. However, we also do oppose the second condition that's being imposed. So I don't know how you want to. Handle that, but if you like, I'm happy to go forward now unless there are other comments in favor of the variance being granted.
Yeah, we'll ask a question later. Thank you though for that.
All right, so having said that, um, the applicant's property sits at the front entrance of our subdivision. We have forty homeowners. And. The reason we're here is because the zoning board is a very important group for the city. Um, you're an independent citizens group that is sort of the buffer we have between. Sometimes overly restrictive and harsh requirements, as you can hear tonight. You're, uh, you have discretion to look at some of the things, other things you do not have discretion to look at, such as the R one hundred zoning. But in any case, um, we have a number of people who are here tonight. There are some who are totally opposed to the Tilly Mill path. Among my forty homeowners, we have some. Many who favor having it, but not in the location that's being recommended. And if you look at the history of this, we may not have time, depending on how much time you're going to give me to speak. I'm available for questions after this because there is a very long history on the, uh. Specifically for the, uh, Tilly Mill shared use path. But as a preliminary, we met with the developer several times and we came to an agreement that we felt, um. It was good to have the homes built. Now, this does mean that we'll be giving up a very nice, uh, landscape parkway that we have a sign, about an eighteen foot. Sign and landscape easement. We don't own it in fee, but we've had for twenty-five years, um, a significant amount of landscaping there. But I'd like to make it clear. We are supporting the Renfro family. They have a contract to sell this that's contingent upon this variance being granted. So if it were not granted, that would be a hardship to that family. And the developer that we've worked with in doing this did meet with us and agreed to reduce the number. From four homes to three homes, which we think works very well for the, many of the reasons our senior planner, Madeline Smith, outlined to you earlier. Um, actually, the contextual lot characteristics that she was discussing and. And probably the main reason this variance was filed don't particularly bother us in the subdivision. We think that based on the developer's agreement and representation, these are going to be approximately one point four million dollar homes. I believe of a four thousand, uh, interior square feet. And we agreed and believe as a group. That it would be better to have them look like the rest of the subdivision than to remain with the parkway, which is why we're going to let that go. Now, there are some differences and nuances among our homeowners on this. However, and you may hear a little bit of that coming up. But I'd say that the biggest problem, um, in this case is looking at the recommendation that was made from staff. It, as I read it, the frontage side path of Tilly Mill. Must be routed and constructed, preserve the forty-four foot oak. Well, to me, as an attorney. That says the Tilly Mill path is going to be built on this location on the east side of Tilly Mill. Now, maybe I'm wrong about that. Maybe the council has decided something that I've over. Now, maybe I'm wrong about that. Maybe the council has decided something that I've overlooked somewhere in the last year and they voted on this. But if you look, this is where you're at the confluence now of public works and zoning and planning. Zoning and planning turns to public works to get its information so that it can build out the conditions of granting the variance. Now, our, our feeling is that you have the power if you want to approve the variance, but without the condition of the path. And the reason for that may be, there are three al- alternate path designs out there. The first two and the third that was developed after considerable public, um, concern was expressed last year. And then we have a further development that occurred that you may be aware of, which is the city hired the PATH Foundation, which made, put together an eighty-page report that was adopted on May twenty-second of this year. And in that, it describes the Tilly Mill path. But it describes it in what my interpretation is to move the entire roadway of Tilly Mill west by one lane and to drop the path in there. So if that's the current plan from public works, I don't know I mean, my understanding is the council approved it. So if this is a change, it's the first that we've heard of it. And so we feel that if that condition is imposed and the builder has to put that in. And that is my understanding is it is required for them to put in this path at that point. Once it started, that's it, the location's determined. But the public works page, the webpage, says this is in the concept design phase. It sounds like based on what zoning and planning is talking with public works, that maybe we're beyond that. All I'm asking is where are the minutes that approved this? Has the council approved this location or not? With three choices, it would seem very expensive and wasteful to have the developer, the builder, go ahead and put this in only to find out that, hey, they decided to put it on the west side. The original alternate one. So essentially, we feel that the agreement we reached, uh, with the developer, we're developing a competent level with them. And we would support the variance to that extent. But we do not feel that, um, this last condition should be imposed. Now, I will say one more thing. Late today, Councilman John Henigan did weigh in on this. And you may not have had a chance to catch the blog. I know all of you are very busy. He offered a lot of different options I hadn't considered. So there, there may be some that are available. And maybe you have some thoughts on this as to what can be done. Um, there's still a number of people here who may be speaking tonight. And, um, I will, I think, conclude that my comments with that. Be open for questions if you have some.
Well, thank you. Yes, there's actually ten minutes pro and ten minutes allocated for, uh, opposition. So while you were, well within your ten minutes of pro, we'll count you front on the pro side.
Appreciate it.
You bet. She have a speaker card? Yeah, we got three minutes.
I'll be super quick. Um, my name's Pam Sawyer. I am at fifty-one oh eight Sheridan Lane. It is one of the properties that abuts up to the Renfro property, the very last one on the backside of the property. And I, I think I was the number two in support of the development, especially when it went from four to three properties. I'm very happy to read that and I support everything Robin just shared on behalf of the Rempro Homeowners Association as well. My point, uh, that I wanted to make tonight is the property as it is today has um, many mature, beautiful trees on the property, uh, that attracts, um, nature to the neighborhood. It also matches the maturity of the neighborhood, which was primarily developed in the nineties. We have a lot of tall, mature trees. Now, um, when I looked at the developers, other sites that they developed in homes, they did a lot of clear cutting, uh, to build the property. And one of the things that makes Stone Woody special is all of our beautiful trees and our tree scapes. I really hope that as the zoning, uh, board that you help reinforce that as many trees can be preserved as possible with the development of this property. But overall, I'm happy with the direction we're going and I just hope that we have those beautiful trees retained. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That closes the, um, uh, period for support of the variance. Uh, we're actually done. Thank you. We, we, we have to vote on additional time, so we may do that later, but, and there's public comment at the end as well. Alright, um, thank you for all the comments. I will again mention that there is ten minutes total. We have a lot of folks who want to speak in opposition. We have ten minutes total, so I would, uh, if there's any redundancies in opposition, uh, once you hear someone, I would say if you have something additional to say, that would be great. If, if you want to have redundancy, then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll need to kind of be brief. So we can start this based on our, our, our list here, no particular order. Unless you want to, guys want to do a certain order? You know? And, um, and we'll proceed as quickly as we can. And when the ten minutes is up, ten minutes is going to be up. I'm gonna do my ten minutes, I guess. Paul will. So Paul, we'll start the, um, start the clock now. And then I'll call in the first person, uh, Robin. Oh, I'm sorry. That was you. Yes, excellent. They have you right on top. Uh, I have, uh, Tom Simon next. Uh, you may. Is that, was that given, was that, was that, was that in part of the packet?
Distributed through Madeline.
Yeah, that was.
If you wish to accept that.
No, we, we didn't, it wasn't in the original packet. We don't need it right now. We don't have time to review it anyways.
Okay, I will be brief. Uh, Tom Simon Stevens walk on the east side of Tilly Mill. I oppose the Tilly Mill, uh, twelve-foot wide path on case twenty-three twenty. Uh, no one on, on the east side or west side of Tilly Mill wants a path on Tilly Mill. And I know you're not going to, you don't address this, but this gives you a little history. Oh, sorry. Okay. Only the city wants the path. Why is that? The city is trying to make the developer pay and start this path on the east side. And then the city can build the rest of a one-mile-long path on the east side from Mount Vernon to Womack. They've been trying to do this for two and a half years. The history of deception, misinformation, contradiction, falsehoods, possible ethics violation conducted by the city and the council is outrageous and needs to be investigated deeply. Zoning board members, uh, well, if you look at the pictures I have, it's obvious where a path should go. The west side. Uh, I'll, I'll address this one thing. In the packet I gave you, Michael Smith and Stacy Harris comments at the July twelfth, twenty-twenty-one council meeting. Michael said, Public Works Director, it's obvious we're going to have the path designed on the west side for a myriad of reasons. Stacy Harris, who was a JCC employee on the west side and a council member, she said, we don't want it on our side, put it on the east side. Magically, it turns out to go on the east side. Even though Michael Smith gave all the reasons why it should go on the west. Joe Sekunder told me personally, he would not vote to build a path on the west side. I mean, I built a path on Tilly Mill unless it's on the west side, the obvious side. A path on the east side will kill hundreds of trees, vegetation, destroy walls, existing five-foot-wide sidewalk. Utility and power lines got to be moved, cause possible flooding, destroy entrances, eliminates deceleration and acceleration lanes and cause dangerous situations at six neighborhood entrances with vehicles and pedestrians. It's going to cost two million dollars more to build on the east side than the west side. And the developer has an email which I also gave you that basically says that same thing and we never talked to him. I had this other information, but that gives you a history. And with all the other information I gave you, it tells you they moved it from the west side, the obvious, the logical side, the least expensive to the east side for one reason and one reason only, because what Stacy Harris said at that council meeting, which could be a possible ethics violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me remind everyone, we're not voting on which side of the street the path's gone, or if it even happens at all. Uh, this is like a public comment we're allowing courtesy for. Frank, uh, Frank O'Neill?
Yeah, good evening and thanks for the opportunity to, uh, come here this evening and express my thoughts. Uh, I live in, in Briars North on Tilly Mill. And, uh, I speak in opposition to the second element of, uh, of this variance request. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion here tonight about contextual regulations. Uh, the need for, you know, contiguous consistency as you move from lot to lot. You want the tone and the, and, and the feel of the street to be consistent as you progress along. And I I, I put a lot of value on that. I really, really do. I think that's the essence of a soul uh, on a street or in a subdivision is that theme, is that architectural consistency. So, um, I understand that you're trying to say, hey, we've got parameters here that, uh, exclude streetscape from con- contextual uh, regulation or contextual, contextual consistency. But think about a diminutive section of construction of the twelve-foot path outside this property. Just a little portion in a one-mile-long segment. You, I mean, you have to, uh, in the spirit of contextual consistency, say that would be just a dreadful scar. A scar for years to come, it might be irreversible. So first thing I would say is that I'm totally opposed to the idea of building a diminutive portion of a twelve-foot trail. The other thing is that, as has been pointed out, and I won't labor, this thing is really up in the air. Very, very much in the air. There's been enormous controversy about this. Uh, there's been an enormous study, there's been enormous quantities of input. And so, uh, it's up in the air as to whether it's going to be alternative one, two, or three. We, we, we just don't know. Uh, for this group to kind of say, well, that's somebody else's problem. You know, we're just dividing a sub, uh, we're just subdividing a lot here. I think that would be doing a disservice. Uh, that, uh, I would urge you to kind of take a broader look here. And, um, you know, just make sure that you look at the big picture, the fluidity of the situation. Some or none of these al- alternatives, uh, may happen. The bond refer- referendum was, you know, clearly a statement about, uh, you know, using a loan as a funding source for paths. Clearly, it was defeated, sadly defeated. But I think it was also a statement about the paths and where they go and what do they look like, you know? Why do they have to be this way or that way or, you know, ugly? Uh, so, um, there is a kind of a, an element of the will of the people here that I would again urge this committee or this, this board to respect. Uh, there, there's a discussion going on about the nature of these things, not just where the money comes from. I think, uh, many, uh, citizens would like to have an annual uh, review of capital appropriations to weigh in on the question about whether we should spend four million on a path along the east side of Tilly Mill or the west side of Tilly Mill, whatever it might be. Or should we, uh, and, and where would we take that from? Would it come from parks? You know, would it come from new soccer field? Would, would it come from, uh, infrastructure, you know? Uh, would it come from road paving? Okay. I mean, that four million dollars is going to come from somewhere. And on an annual basis, uh, I would advocate that as, as a community, have an opportunity to comment on that. So bottom line is, you know, I, I would really like you not to do an end run around the democratic process or give any appearance of that. Uh, you, you've, you've made the point about preserving the tree. You've also made the point that, you know, your hands are tied as regards streetscape. So the tree is in the streetscape. So, you know, that to me says you have some latitude, you've got some latitude certainly to influence. And I would hope that, uh, you would take the fluidity of the situation, the controversy of the situation uh, into account and, uh, not require the acquisition of this land or the construction of the twelve-foot trail. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, about two and a half minutes left. Next card I have is Ilya. She left. Uh, Bob Hickey?
Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Bob Hickey. I'm a citizen and homeowner in Dunwoodie. I've lived in Dunwoodie for forty-five plus years. I live in the Brook Farm subdivision. I have no dog in this fight, uh, as far as, except I'm a it very interested citizen of Dunwoodie. Uh, I'm here tonight, uh, in fact, okay with the variance overall, except condition number two. I am not in favor of condition number two for four very concise reasons. Uh, number one, the condition, uh, attempts to improperly influence the placement location of the proposed multi-use trail on Tilly Mill before elected city officials make an open public forum decision and vote on it. Number two, the condition in this application is unfair to this applicant because no similar condition was opposed on the application by the Marcus Julius Community Center and the Pickleball zoning application before this board of, in midsummer two thousand twenty-three. There was no provision that they build any trailer path or seed any right of way. Number three, the conditions imposed by the city staff is a stealth stealth use of eminent domain by the city in an attempt to avoid the negative publicity afforded by the legal use of eminent domain and to avoid spending money that the city doesn't have. The city of Dunwoodie, the citizens of Dunwoodie rejected the expenditure of city resources for trails and paths by an overwhelming fifty-seven percent to forty-three percent. The condition in this application, okay, is a disguised attempt to improperly evade or override a citizen's vote on the same matter. I must say that I had the same comments submitted to the city staff and they were not in the package given to you folks. I have a copy. I, unfortunately, I only have three copies. I'd be happy to provide these statements, which was in the same email I sent to city staff, which was not in your package. Thank you.
Thank you. And our time is up. Uh, and staff, I don't know if that, that last comment, if the, the letter was received too late for the packet or whatever, but that's something we should, we should acknowledge.
Then, so we, we always publish the, uh, the package a week before. That's when it gets posted on the web. What we have done is we've sent everything that was submitted to us. What time did you send it? So we sent everything, everything yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, with everything updated, everything that came in up to yesterday was submitted to the board and seen by the board.
Okay, we'll check into that. Alright, public comment is closed. Alright, can I? Board? Yes.
Um, staff, we have a little technical glitch with some of our monitor screens. Uh, we just need someone to, I think, re-log in. Some of them are still on, some of them need to be refreshed. Sorry. Okay, thanks.
Uh, we only have ten, it's, we're only allowed ten minutes per side. I, I clearly stated that early up front. There'll be a public comment at the end. Thank you. Artie?
Uh, let, let me go, because I, I think I could clarify a lot of things with you guys, um. It looks to me, I try to, try to hone in the, the the questioning and what's before me, um, uh, you know. I, I've been in this board as long as I can remember. I think I was when this, when the, when the city started. But it looks to me from evaluating this, that very little or no one is opposing the subdivision. It seems the only problem is the second part. Which has been said over and over and over that might be fortunate for me today that I don't have any, um, say over. However, however, listen to me, listen to me, you know. Uh, the first person who spoke, spoke very well. Um, and I don't mean that within attorney, but you know, he he, he honing on the points that needed to to, to be pointed. And and it is that okay, you guys uh, don't have the ability to rule on the path, but however, there's something that kind of looks like you have, you have power over the past. Right? I'm just telling you now, unless these other do, I don't have that power. And in addition to that, nobody down there have that power, that variance is not before me. There's one, there's one. And the one is the contextual lot characteristics. Now, there is a second part. And that second part tries to preserve the tree. So unless you don't want us to preserve that oak tree, that, that's the only thing I could possibly, I, I am not looking to rule on whether or not the path's going to be built or not built or however, or things like that. And I'm never going to try, okay? Um, somebody else is going to do that and somebody else has that power. What I think we can What I think we can do, right, is we can, on the second part, say, use a nice little word. Legal word, if the side path until a meal, oh, you know, it could be better, should. The side path until the road frontage be built or granted. It must be rodded and constructed to preserve the, oh, the, 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 the tree. But other than that, I, I mean, I love to hear you guys, you, you, you're my neighbors and everything, but, but it's not gonna come from us. It's not gonna come from this board. So if you're happy with the should, the, the if, which is the little. One that makes everything but shows that we don't, then I think. My fellow board members would probably entertain it. I'm only one, one body on this whole thing. But I am not sure, I don't think, uh, the zoning board should put itself in. Somebody else's shoes on this one when we're not giving that power. So I, unless somebody at this time wants to tell me why we should or not, or should not grant the subdivision. What three, I mean, any argument, I think this is almost a done case. Um, that's what I'd say.
Thanks, Artie. Well said. Any more comments on the board?
Any questions for staff? I think that's where a lot of my.
Sure.
Stuff is coming from. Um, okay, so what's really perplexing to me and where I kind of understand for where the renfor folks are coming from, or those that are opposing the second part. Is on all the blueprints, there's a proposed, there's a current right of way and a proposed. So this whole, I, I'm not as, I'm not versed in this in lieu of thing. Um, so my first question is, how often do you see that in residential versus commercial? Uh, the in lieu of piece. And the second of all is. The, the piece about the tree itself. I mean, it's, it's already in the critical root zone as well into Tilly Mill Road. So. I, I happened to look, I don't know if you guys saw the, the note from the builder and was saying that tree. Healthy or not, it may not survive any kind of construction that's going on, just like. You know, as a personal example, my house, my, the tree in front of that house, I don't know how they were gonna do that proposed project of Molemeck and Shambly Dunwoody without it. So the point I'm saying is this is why, why are we, I, I kind of. We can't vote on it per se, like Artie's saying, but why, why is it a condition if it's, if that critical root zone is already well into? You know, um, non-imperious surface and things like that. And can you just kind of like? Explain the difference between the, the deemed right of, the current existing right of way. And the proposed right of way as a condition of it and how that fits into. The path itself. And furthermore, if the path hasn't been voted on or decided on, why is it showing up on our CAD drawings as a?
So I, let me, uh, address the tree issue first, um. So generally, if a tree is somewhere first and then grows around an obstacle, so let's say hypothetically you have. Um, you know, a tree grows up in a parking lot in sort of a landscape island. And then it grows tall. It generally can be fairly healthy. The issue that you're having is when construction impacts the root zone as it grows. So trees can, you know, grow in all sorts of contexts. Like you see this sometimes in, in older neighborhoods in Atlanta, we have trees in surprisingly small areas. But, um, it is sort of the, the disturbance of the root zone, uh, of an existing tree. That's the dangerous thing that can damage and, and hurt the tree. That is what the condition is supposed to address. Um, what, what was the other question? Could you please?
So the piece about the existing right of way and then the proposed right of way or the whatever it's called, the deemed right of way as a result of the granting of the variance.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's very much a held hot, I mean, I'm not just painting it as like. A lane in layman's terms, but like a held hostage kind of a thing in a very controversial area, right? Like, I don't care wherever you end up on the. On the voting spectrum for the bond, it, it failed or what have you. But my question is to earlier, I think gentleman Robin was saying. Is if this isn't, if it hasn't been voted on by council, why is, why is this a part of? There's a difference between a twelve foot path and right of way improvements, right? So like when they did the Shambly Dunwoody Road. Hope in a, um, improvements to right of way on that project. That went from a, I think, a four foot sidewalk. It was supposed to be a five foot and then it actually went to a six. But nowhere along that process was I informed as personally the homeowner. So I, I feel personally attached to the argument. Of what these folks are trying to make. And my point is this too, you know, we're holding hostage to on the developer of wanting to do. Something net positive for the community, bringing additional tax revenue and things like that. I just don't know, it, it just seems like. From one of the earlier slides you guys said, we don't have anything, we can't have any say in it, our hands are tied except for to Artie's point. You know, changing the verbiage and, and, uh, condition two to where I would personally say, no, I wouldn't even touch condition two. Because it's, it's a slippery slope, you know, and, and it's not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying, give an inch, take a mile. And quite frankly, this history has, this city does have a history of doing that. And again, uh, I, you know. For city comments, I, I need a, a clear explanation as to why. The, the ZBA seeing this piece and if, if not, where's the clarity around section six, the, the in lieu of piece and how that would work out?
And, yeah, I can, I could quickly respond to that. Um. If this was before you and did not need a variance, or if this wasn't before you and it would not need a variance, it's just a subdivision of three lots. They're conforming. The right of way dedication would still apply because all new development needs to meet. Right of way dedications. That's true for commercial development. That's true for subdivisions that create new lots. That's independent of the variance request before y'all. So that is something that we handle outside of this process. So why we showed it as part of this process is because it determines the lot width. So it really influences what's before y'all is like, a question of the lot frontage that they have. That depends on the right of way dedication because it impacts the total lot frontage that's available for the three lots. So in order to compute the overall, uh, lot frontage, we needed to know the future conditions. That's why that's before you, but that's not part of the ask, that's not part of the, and that would have happened, uh, the same way. Uh, had they not come before y'all. The, uh, the right of way line, uh, Madeline, I think, had exhibits lines up. With wonderful gap, it's to the south. If you see that orange line. And to the north, if you see that orange line. In, for those properties like decades ago, and then some of this wasn't even, the city of Dunwoody, some of this was the cap county. Ask for additional right of way. For this property, it didn't happen because it was the original homestead. So what we're doing here is we're lining up the overall site conditions, um. As it pertains to the right of way, uh, which is something that, uh, would have happened like, like side path or no side path, the same way.
A- a- again, so Paul, that's helpful. Thank you. I guess my. It, my biggest concern really is just as a citizen in general, whether I'm on this board or not, is, is again, on those CAD drawings we receive. It does show that demarcation for the twelve foot wide path instead of a stereotypical right of way improvement. Can you? Can you please, is, because I, from what I understand, it's all proposed, nothing's fleshed out, nothing's been voted on, like you said, so. My, my thing is too, like, much like we see in some of these right of way improvement projects, whether it's residential, commercial. You have sidewalks that lead to nowhere, which, which is where we had that before too, but, you know, I just don't want something to sit there if it hasn't been voted on.
So, um, part of the variance process, um, and, and part of my approach to when I'm working with applicants on different projects. Um, is I want them to be aware of, here's the maximum you could be required to do. At the time of development. And so there are concept plans for, for the Tilly Mill path. It's a part of the Trails Master Plan. Um, and so I wanted to make them aware of. This could be a requirement and I want them to account for it. I don't want to go. Hey, there's this thing, it may or may not happen. You could just build a six foot sidewalk or you could build a twelve foot sidewalk. Um, you know, I want them to be prepared for, for sort of, this is the most of what you would need to do. Um, and so just conceptually, um, they've shown this is the maximum we would be required to do. Um, and like I said, the streetscape improvements and what those will look like will be handled at the time of permitting. Um, so it, the path as it's shown here is not what it's. Going to be tied to what they do when they get their permits.
Right, and I, I, the only issue is, right, is that we talked about the final plat, must be substantial compliance, right, with the submitted. Plat, and this is the submitted plat, I assume, right, or not?
Yeah, and so the substantial compliance means that there, there is room for, for change for, and that would include. You know, the streetscape design, if they want to move a property line slightly, but still within the requirements and regulations, that would be allowed. Um, so.
So is this, is this?
I don't want to mislead applicants or tell them, hey, you know, I don't want to essentially lie to them or tell them.
Right, right, no, that's, no, I mean, that's why probably there's so many people here today, you know. Uh, obviously, it's a, it's a high stakes area, but. What I'm trying to understand, obviously trying to preserve the tree, but then it almost seems like the tree is a piece of like. Uh, means to the end of the path, almost, the way that it's written, at least to me. Uh, I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but. I, I second Artie's, I'm just opening this up for discussion for us to, I second you in that, but I would almost say to just strike number two. I'm not. Saying get rid of the tree, I'm not saying, I let folks. Iron that out, but my question back to, to staff is, are, are you saying that this? Independent of the tree, if we don't request, if we request this variance, but scratch number two as a condition. What does that do? Is the developer still required to do the, the right of way improvements up to the, to the dedicated?
Yes, they'll still be required to do, like I said, either the right of way improvements or depending on what stage they are in the design. They could do the fee in lieu, which essentially means that they pay an amount of money to the city. Rather than build it, that money then gets dedicated to the future project in that area or future infrastructure projects there.
But then my other question to that is, why wouldn't that be offered upfront? Instead of just going around, using the tree is not bait, but you know what I'm saying?
So the purpose of the, um, condition number two is, you know, we said if the. If the developer require, is required to build out that path, that they will preserve the tree. Um, the tree is a really nice public benefit and they are asking for an exception to the rules. Um, and so when people ask for an exception to the rules, um, you know, we are allowed to ask for, you know, public benefits that relate to the improvement.
I have a question. If this was on the other side of the street, sorry, if this was on the other side of the street. And would they be required the same?
Like if the path was on the other side of the street?
If, if a subdivision was going in on the other side of Tilly Mill.
If a subdivision was going in anywhere on Tilly Mill, regardless of the side of the road, they would be asked to do right of way. Dedication and right of way improvement.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't matter.
Development is required to do right of way.
Okay.
And that's essentially what that second one's saying, right? They need to do right away improvements. It should be worded that way, but it's not, but that's, I think that's where everyone's getting.
Yeah. Except that they may, instead of doing right of way improvements, they may donate.
Money.
So I, I, I'm kind of leaning towards your suggestion, Artie, of putting in a. Potential. If, if the developer choose, and I don't know how to word this, we'll have to, I would have to flesh it out. If the developer chooses to develop. Right of way rather than, you know, if, donate funds, how, I'm not sure that's the right way to say it. Then preserve the tree, preserve the roots. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or, or could we just? Ask for funds and not. Yeah, I, I don't know, does this?
I, I, I think, I, I, I tell you guys, the, th- this is where my kind of legal. Mind's going. I, I just don't even want to go down that path, guys. And the reason I said should is because, you know what? If it happens, somebody else make it. It, it just, it is happening. And I'm just trying to maybe preserve the tree. Otherwise, if we, my suggestion would be. If we don't think just, we don't have to vote number two, guys. I'm just, I'm just, I'm, this is, we could just. Do number one and then after, would do, actually, we could do, I moved, don't take it, just think, I moved.
There's one variance, there's not two. It's part and parcel of one variant.
So I.
So the number two is just the way they worded it here.
Yeah.
For the approval.
I like the fact that I might save a tree, you know, because I, the, the tree canopy here is something that I always like. You know, but if, if I'm gonna do it where, at the sacrificial, that I'm gonna give someone bait to, um. Maybe appeal me to Superior Court, I don't want to go that path. You understand what I mean? So I, I, I look at these things forward. So I, that's, that's the reason I said, if you guys are comfortable, and we could talk about a little bit more, these are important decisions. If you, if, if the should is there and it allows us to prefer the tree, let's think about it, we'll word it in a way. Uh, if not, you know, I'm.
Well, that, here's the thing, in our packet, on page seven, packet page seven, PDF page three or five. It says, in addition to the requi, I've got to highlight it, in addition to the requirements for the lot frontage and area, all subdivisions, yada, yada. The right of way improvements include a twelve foot multi-use path. That seems very suggestive to me that it's going there.
Yeah, but we, we, let me tell you, that is not our problem. That's what I'm trying to tell you guys.
I want to get.
I understand that. I understand that, but it's not before me. You know, that, that's what I'm trying to tell you guys, you know?
Can we go back to the slide that has the orange and the green? Thank you. So. The pink line is where the sidewalk, is where the property line goes.
Is the existing property.
The, okay, right. And that is the tree, I don't see it on this slide.
Can you see my mouse?
Yes.
That's where the tree is.
Okay, so the tree is on their property now. Once they have to donate right of way and they move their property line back to the dotted green line so that it is. In. Um, cause so that it is consistent with the line, the orange line to the north and the orange line to the south, then they seed. Property ownership of where the tree is.
That becomes part of the public right of way.
Okay.
But that's, so that becomes part of the public right of way, which is very different than saying a, a general. Well, I guess it becomes a public right of way as a result of the improvements to the right of way, so.
It's part of the development.
It's part of the continuum, so.
Okay, and so.
Where the tree piece, I'm, I'm hung up on the trees and, and saying, I just don't know.
It's in that buffer, it's in that buffer, that's why.
Well, and it's, the tree's already pretty much on Tilly Mill, it's right up to this, I go up, I go down Tilly Mill every day, you know? I mean, the tree, read the memo from the developer. I mean, I, I tend to agree, I hate trees going, but those big oaks.
It's not really about the tree, but, yeah.
So the tree becomes public right, public.
It's the public right of way, yeah, that's what they.
And it's currently private.
Currently, yes. And regarding the email from the developer, me and the city arborist did go. Um, check on the health of the tree and then it was the termination of the arborist that. The developer was being a little bit fatalistic about the tree. It's in, it's in good health currently.
Okay.
All right, guys, I, I hate, I hate, I gotta drive you guys home. Think about it, focus.
Yes.
We, we, we're making this about, about the path. This is a variance, that this, that's, this is a variance about whether or not, you know, right? Whether contextually, am I okay that three properties go there? And I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna give them a variance because they have a little problem with the front. Real, the, the Tilly Mill front, frontage, as far as the homes are concerned. Th- th- that's where we are. When it comes to the path. You know, as much, I, I don't need to feel bad about this, guys, because it's not in front of me, I don't have the decision. If I make the decision, some might, someone might take this and then go do something because Artie and the rest of them didn't have that. And it wasn't in front of them. You, you, you understand what I mean? So I, I, I'm just telling you guys this a little bit so that everyone understands. At the end of the day. Our, we're gonna do what's right, because the way I see this leaning, no, nobody, no, no one is, is saying that. I don't want the three homes. Even the subdivision is like, kumbaya, come on over, we like you guys. So I'm looking at this, you know, we grant the three ones. If you guys want us to save the tree, I'll put a should thing in there. That means if that happens, well. This is save that tree. Otherwise, I think we, we already ruled that.
So staff, if, say, Artie puts his, if, uh, qualifier in there, should, whatever, uh. They still have to, it still doesn't negate the, uh, the obligation to at least contribute funds or do some kind of, uh, streetscape, right? Even if, if he's on the other side of the street, if it's on the west side, they still have to donate money and do it, improve the streetscape, and they can't mess with the tree.
So the, the condition that's written there is. So, the, the condition that's written there is not dictating whether a path gets built, the dimensions of the path.
Right.
Um, you know, i- it is only saying that if the developer builds the streetscape. Themselves, they will have to preserve the forty-four inch oak tree, if you get rid of condition number two. Um, and in that case, they'll still be required. At the time of permitting, like I said, they'll either build out the path, or they'll do a fee in lieu, if they build out the path without this condition. They won't be required to preserve the tree, that's the only thing this condition is doing, and staff is supportive of, of adding the qualifier of if or should. You know, if you need help wordsmithing, we're, we're here to help with that, um, uh, our interpretation. Uh, was that, that condition was there, we were always assuming the if, even if it wasn't written explicitly, so we are in supportive of that.
Okay, good, understood.
I, I, I have another question, actually, before you, so the, the second part of two, right? Which is, it alludes to construction and disturbance of the side path within the critical root zone. Shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the CRZ area, and shall utilize a root bridge construction. So it kinda tells them how to build, should we just disregard that? Is that something that's going to happen anyway?
So, the twenty-five percent, uh, of disturbance in the critical root zone is, um, just sort of the standard. If you go above twenty-five percent disturbance, you'll negatively impact the tree, so that's a standard part of our codes. Um, the, right, uh, the suggestion about the root bridge is. Not required by our code currently, it's an additional requirement. Um, I worked with the applicant, Michael, um, to come up with a, a way to build a path of any width. Um, that would not disturb the root zone, he's actually built that type of path. In, on other developments, in order to preserve trees on those properties, so it's a construction method. That he's familiar with, and he provided that to me, actually, it's from one of his previous projects, and so I included it. Um, as an exhibit, just to make sure that when they, if they do install a sidewalk there, or a side path there, it will be built with the root bridge.
Okay. Alright.
We go, alright, you guys ready, and then I'll just make the motion, you know? Um, I make the motion, um, to, uh, approve the requested special exception. From section twenty-seven dash one forty-seven, uh, free to allow relief from contextual lot characteristics standards. For three lot subdivision, subject to the following condition. First, the final plat must be in substantial compliance with the submitted preliminary plat. Prepared by W N B Engineering, and dated twelve twenty, twenty twenty-three, as depicted in exhibit eight. Secondly, should the side path on the Tilly Mill Road frontage be built? All granted, it must be routed and constructed to preserve the forty-four inch oak tree. Now. Should it be granted, or constructed, construction and disturbance of the side path within the critical root zones. Shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the CRZ area, and shall utilize a root bridge construction method, as you can see on exhibit C.
A second? Um, I'm sorry, I just want to have you go over that one more time, that second sentence, to make sure. I heard it correctly.
Be specific, if that's the only really.
The, the number two?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'll reset number two, alright, here we go, I hope my brain's still working, okay, now, should. The side path on the Tilly Mill Road frontage be built, all granted. It must be routed and constructed. To preserve the forty-four inch oak tree. Should the side path. Be granted, or built. Right, construction and disturbance of the side path. Within the critical zone shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the CRZ area, and shall utilize a root bridge construction method. Well, if we don't put granted, if it granted by another entity, but not granted by us. I mean, the reason I put granted is because we're not doing grant it, but somebody, somebody else has to grant it.
We're not, yeah.
Which side path?
We're not talking about footage, none of that stuff's here, none of that, none of this in this.
I think you've stated.
I think it's, I think it's fine.
I think you're good.
Yeah.
What do you ask?
Um, just the word granted. And, I know, I know what you're saying. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the context, we're, nothing regarding the side path is granted, the developer, either two of two.
The, the keyword here is should.
And I understand that, I, I think, if it, if you were to just say, should the side path be built? The side path on the Tilly Mill Road frontage be built?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that, I was trying to cover us both, and kinda.
Again, I just don't think it's.
I, I would actually agree with that.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, cause what I was thinking, and, and I'll go with that, I was thinking that some other entity is gonna grant it, but should it be granted by another entity? Not us, you know?
My, my question is, it's not something to be granted.
It's the construction, that's the issue, not the grant.
No, no, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine, but you see where I'm going, right, I was going.
Implies somebody else granted.
Exactly. It implies somebody else granted it, but that's okay, it implies that somebody else other than us granted it, but that, that's where I was going with that. I was, I was trying to think twice, but, you know.
So. Um, do you, could you, I know you've already given a second, could you amend your motion, or do you?
Do you want me to put should?
Yeah.
Should, no, hold on, no, no, let, let's get it right, so I could get it, do you, are you looking at should be built, or should you say, should somebody else? Should it be granted by someone else?
I think you're saying, should it be?
Built, okay. I mean.
Should it be constructed? But I.
I could say built or constructed.
Pick one, it's your.
He's the, he's the attorney on the board.
Um, maybe that's the problem, we think too much, so. Um, alright, I'll tell you what, so, I'll amend it to, um, to just put built, okay? And I'll read it again, how about that, alright, here we go. Take three. Um. Number two, the second condition, right? Should the side path on Tilly Mill Road frontage be built? Or constructed? Okay? It must be routed. Uh, okay, I'm losing my mind, okay, routed and constructed to preserve the forty-four inch oak tree, okay? On exhibit B. Should it be built, or constructed? Construction and disturbance of the side path within the critical root zone, CRZ shall not exceed twenty-five percent of this, of the. Uh, of the CRZ area, and shall utilize a root bridge construction method. How we doing?
Good.
Alright.
A first and a second, as stated by Artie, all those in favor of approving? No opposition, it's approved, thank you. Any other business, staff business, any other, other business? Um. Any other board comment? Paul? There is public comment, but it's limited to, right, it's a three minute segment for public comment, so unless there's an additional comment to be made, we'll proceed. Right. Alright.
Yeah, correct, so like the, the public comment section generally is three minutes per commenter. So, so whoever wants to speak now gets, gets three minutes.
Do they need a card?
Um.
I mean, whoever didn't get a chance to speak, they wanna speak now, this is your chance, you know?
There's five left that didn't speak, you have to have a card, I think.
Joe, I believe you have a card for me, Bill Grossman, five oh six one, Hidden Branches Drive.
I do, Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, Bill.
I agree, no, the developer should not be held up in building these clearly R one hundred houses that. The surrounding neighbors are in support of, I agree that the forty-four inch tree should be preserved. I do not believe that the. Developer should be in control of decision of. When anything is built there. Uh, on December twenty-eighth, in the cry, the mayor called for a. Revisit and discussion on the trails issue, she sent me an email, and probably all of you as well, said the same thing on Monday. Uh, so, this issue needs to be revisited, the way to do it. Is to put the money for escrow, in escrow, that this. S- sidewalk or trail or whatever would cost, Public Works can give a. Estimate for that. It's common process, it's covered in the city code, it's been done before, it'll be done again. Uh, this would put the city in the position of building that. Whenever the public discussion over the issue is completed. That's the way I think it should have been handled, and I felt that you could have separated that out and specified that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Grace Freeman, I and my husband own the property at two zero seven seven. Renfro Lake Drive, that you've heard a whole lot about tonight. Up until this day, when you turn in Renfro Lake, we are the first house on the right. Soon, we will be either the third, or the fourth, or the fifth house on the right. So I feel like we're being impacted as much as anyone by this construction. We've raised two sons that have played on property, that other children in Dunwoody didn't have. Trees, woods. They told me over Christmas, they don't know what these contractors might find when they start digging. We are in full agreement for these homes. We've talked to the builders, and we want these homes to be similar to the homes that are already in our neighborhood, that we've loved for twenty-five years. My concern is one that's been voiced by others, we're putting this piece of property that faces Tilly Mill. For a sidewalk to nowhere. If you look on both sides of it, neither one of those areas are gonna be developed anytime soon. Holland Court has all newer houses, you go down, all the way down, there's not a place that's. You're gonna get that amount of sidewalk area to develop the sidewalks, unless there's a plan. And nowhere have I heard a plan. We have a dog that we walk every evening, and I walk by this big oak tree. I wanna save the oak tree, but I also wanna plan of what this is gonna look like on Tilly Mill, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you walk your dog today? I think I saw you.
Oh, you are. Okay.
My name is Larry Glassman, I live at twenty seventy-two. Westover Plantation. And what I'm concerned about this construction is the, is the removal of the watershed behind my house. This property, although flooding is common, and we've had several ser- serious floods over the twenty years that I've been there, this location. And removal of this, of the disturbance of the watershed is gonna exacerbate this problem for us. I've consulted the county on this problem, they have, they've said they cannot do anything about, uh, the reti- about, uh. Detention ponds or any other thing, we ha- we have a, uh, the county built, I guess originally when the house was built. There is a thirty-six inch main, uh, sewage mangue under my property, but it's connected to a very, very small and. Uh, obsolete, uh, detention pond on that property, and they said they would not be able to do anything about that as long as. Uh, the Renfros would not permit it, now that this new, new property is coming up. We wanna make sure that developer, when the removal of this watershed is going to do something to improve. The flood situation in our property, and also in our neighbors at twenty sixty, Westover Plantation. So we're gonna make, go and put that in, so that when that, I, I don't appear, I don't necessarily, uh. I'm not against, have been building these houses, I think the, uh, re- reduction of three instead of four was a, was a good move. And that, that's, it's going to be, uh, I think four houses would spoil the look, looks of the neighborhood. But I think that my problem is, and my neighbor, is that we wanna do something about, uh, the problem that we might have. With removal of the watershed on this property, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Think, I'm sure it's noted by the city. Well.
I think you got a card for me, there's, uh, Danny Schornel, twenty eleven, Woodland Way, Dunwoody, Georgia, best city in Georgia, by the way. And, uh, first of all, thanks all of you for serving, I understand you give up your time here, and, uh. Artie, you've been on this since the, uh, beginning of time, I think, so thank you, and Joe, you're same. I just wanna make a couple of comments on the tree, you know, I'm an old farm boy, and I, I know a little bit about oak trees, and, uh. You know, if you, uh, you just drugged the canopy of a, of an oak tree, it's, uh, started its slow death. And, uh, gentlemen, uh, you know, I was a, I was a carpenter as a kid, and so, uh. You can have a construction, the gentleman that owns the construction company, he's gonna say, okay, we're gonna save that oak tree. And then he's not there that day, and construction people have a good chance to, you know, they take a shortcut, and I told, uh, just told. Bob over there, we had a big oak tree, and we were gonna build this house, and next day I went out there as a bulldozer, even though the construction guys knew going underneath there, so. You folks that are running this show, make sure you're protecting the canopy of that, uh, and you better put up a fence and all that other good stuff, because your construction guys. Yeah, they'll run right through there, because you, you know, all of us, since day one here, we've talked about greenery, we've talked about tree canopy. Very, very important for the citizens of this city, and it's very important for the beauty of the citizens of this city. So, that canopy and everything, and I don't, I didn't hear anything about whether you're going to, there's a lot of other trees. On that lot, and I understand the gentleman, the, the people that are selling it, and it's worth a lot of money, so I understand that, definitely, but. That, those, uh, other trees there, I don't know if we're gonna try to keep any of them or not, I don't, I didn't hear anything about that, but I think that'd be a very important factor. In your approval or not approval, but anyway, Happy New Year, thanks for serving, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny, uh, and, and, uh, just, uh, staff, we did have a comment, uh, right, someone that spoke in, in favor was. Asked about the, the trees, and I'm sure you guys are working with the developer to save as many mature trees as you can on the property, as much as you can. Um, anyone else? Alright, with that, final board comment? None? We are adjourned.